I want to welcome everybody to the Atherton City Council May 21st regular session. And I would like to have the first call, will call please.
Councilmember Whitmer?
Here.
Councilmember Lewis?
Here.
Vice Mayor DeGalea?
Here.
Mayor Lee?
Here. We'll stand for the judicial allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi again, welcome everybody. I'd like to take a brief moment to acknowledge one of our 25-year residents that passed away last week, Betty Mugawa, a very, a very big supporter of the Holbrook Palmer Park, member of the Atherton Dames, as well as the foundation. I'd just like to give her a moment of silence, please. Thank you. She will be missed. So let's go ahead and move on to presentations. We have no presentations. So any public comments? So any public comment from anybody that has any item that is not on the agenda? If you wish to step forward, please. Thank you.
My comment is very, Wally Sleeth, I live on 227 Cattel. My comment is very brief. I find it extremely ironic in that the item about the Gilmore House is at the very end of the agenda. And I'm, and in light of the fact that appears to me, no prejudice towards the staff, that how it got there, when there may be people here who want to say something about it. And I just think the orders that that was put seems a little ironic to me. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Wally.
Thank you.
Any other public comment for an item that is not on the agenda? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jack Ringham. At the corner of Fair Oaks Lane and Middlefield, I've lived there since 1966. It'll be 48 years in June, and I'd like to give you some of my perspectives on Fair Oaks Lane traffic, which has gotten a lot worse since we moved there. When we moved there, there was little traffic on Fair Oaks Lane, and we thought it was safe for our kids to ride bikes to and from Ensonall School on days that the weather was suitable. I also thought it was safe for me to walk to and from the train station in light or dark. In the 1970s, Highway 280 opened, and commuters soon learned that the fastest route between 101 and 280 was the Fair Oaks Lane-Atherton Avenue link. It's the quickest route between Route 92 in San Mateo and Route 85 in Sunnyvale. And as people learned about that, the traffic on Fair Oaks Lane increased and increased. And it's mostly traffic by non-residents of Atherton. In the 1980s, we had our first neighborhood efforts to do something about traffic. We wanted to do two things. One, try to make Fair Oaks Lane a local street where opportunities for patrolling traffic would be better. And secondly, to enforce the speed limit of 25 miles an hour on Fair Oaks Lane. Neither of those got anywhere. And the police's concern was that the 85th percentile speed, presumably the speed at which the majority of traffic is below, was 35 miles an hour on a 25 mile an hour street. So their efforts to enforce the 25 mile an hour speed limit were futile because if it got to court, the judge would throw it out because they were still within the 85th percentile. In 2007, 2008 was our last major effort. It took about a year, starting in the fall of 2007. And on November 19th, 2008, the council voted five to nothing for an $18,000 study by Kenley Horn, the town traffic consultants, for a traffic study on Fair Oaks Lane. It never happened. There were budget constraints, the recession, and it never happened. Now, six years later, we're starting over again. At the March 13th Transportation Committee meeting, we had a presentation and discussion on Fair Oaks Lane traffic, and that was discouraging, encouraging, but no action could be taken because it was not an agenda item. And I know you can't take any action tonight, but please consider our situation and help us when you can. Yesterday, I received information from Menlo Park on their 10-year experience with speed humps and other traffic calming measures throughout Menlo Park. And I forwarded this information to the staff and to the Transportation Committee Chairman. That included a copy of their 2004 Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. And since that time, they've added 80 speed humps in town, and their results have been quite successful. Thanks for your help.
Thank you, John. Any other public comments for items not on the agenda? John, please. And be aware, I think that we're having a little trouble with our, are we?
John Vertaro of Stockbridge.
Thank you, John.
I'm up here speaking, but I'm speaking to help the previous Mr. Sleeth and Mr. Ringham. I'm on the Transportation Committee, as you know, and I know what Jack's going through on that for years and years, on that issue. And we, I personally am behind him, as other people are. And as for Wally's comment about the item being on the last on the agenda, I've been going to these meetings for 30 years, I'm used to it. You guys put it on the back so all these guys, yeah, all these leave. But anyway, my own personal, I can't go into it because I wanted to speak on that subject. And I hope we get through early enough to people that be here.
Thank you, John. Any other, please?
I'm not as fast as I used to was. I'd like to speak on this issue, if I may. The Town of Atherton has the opportunity, since its inception, to put the buildings of this town in a proper location. By putting them here at the train station, we're going back to the 1880s when all of the traffic was around the train station. Your dry goods stores, your hotels, your restaurants, your bars, your places of ill repute, everything gathered there. Time has moved on, and it's time for the Town of Atherton to move with it. We have the opportunity now to go adjacent to the town manager's home on that eastern boundary and go all the way to the western boundary and put in your buildings. Your library, which is self-supporting, I've heard for years, Dee Dee Fisher can raise $5 million for the police department. The sale of the property at the train station would more than build all the necessary buildings for the town council meeting, the permit department, so forth. I urge, urge you very desperately to think about the advantage that you would have by moving those buildings into Holbrook Palmer. We have given so much away to the Little League that the town, when voted on that issue, didn't realize what they were doing when they gave the permission. Now they want to build dugouts, they want to build overheads, they want to build a stadium there. That park was given originally for the use of the Town of Atherton. And I question, how many parents of Athertonians here have their children that are actually in Little League? So council, please, 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 think seriously about this, because you will never, ever have this same opportunity again. Thank you.
Thank you, Lou. Any other public comments for an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and close public comments. We're going to move on to item number five. What about the Wallace question? City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the city council had a closed session with three items. The first is a public employee performance evaluation. City manager, the council gave directions to their negotiator. Conference with labor negotiator, the second was labor negotiations regarding unrepresented employees, again, they gave directions to the city manager. The third was a conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, People versus Kristofferson. The city council received report.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move to item number six, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, you've got the written report in front of you. I'd just like to point out a couple of dates. Tonight is the budget kickoff for the general fund and operations budget. On June 4th, the study session will be part two, focusing on capital projects and special funds budgets, as well as a discussion of the parcel tax. And on June 18th is the final budget report scheduled for adoption, and that's also where you set the parcel tax. You've got a couple of items within the manager's report, you've got departmental reports as well. Would like to point out that bike ped striking going in at Middlefield in March, that should be coming up by the end of June. And then I'll be on vacation from June 18th to May 27th, there's no council meetings in between, so we should be fine. The manager's report.
Thank you, George. Any questions for George?
Yeah, I, do you have any information as to when we're going to get any proposals from the, so the bike pets, since you brought up the bike pet? That we're having the, the organization put together for us and that?
The $5,000 grant stuff? Mike, do you have any update on that one?
The last I heard, I believe, there was applications kind of on a statewide competition that was due, I think sometime this week. Our consultants advised that we would be better to bypass that and submit our projects in a couple of months where it's more of a regional type competition. So it's still, it's still on, you know, the applications still need to be done, but it hasn't been submitted yet.
But to make it regional, then we need to coordinate with Mr. Slocum and others. And so we need to get the proposals in. I suppose I'm concerned about, because it's getting to be summertime, and the county does take holidays. And, and we need to get the proposals in front of them and get their support. They also offered to pay for part of the proposals, but, but, you know, we spoke to Casey before, I just haven't, it's gotten radio silent, and that's all.
We'll follow up, get a report back there.
Can I, can I chime in on that? So is any thought being given to creating a priority conservation area, a PCA, to be eligible for more grants from, like, the Transportation Authority, the MTC, among the CCAG and the CMAC boards? And all these cities around us, we have PDAs and these priority conservation areas, are getting huge sums of money for things like bike and pedestrian paths, or bridges, and, you know, other things that we're talking about doing.
We don't qualify for a PDA.
No, I understand, because we have to have businesses in multiple density and high density and stuff, so a PCA.
A PCA is usually a conservation area, a large park, large regional area for that. But maybe Lisa and I can look into that and get back to you.
I really appreciate it, because I, I brought it up in these meetings, and it's not necessarily just for a park. You know, they're doing bike paths throughout towns.
Well, and we have a 22-acre facility that...
That's going to go through. And like the riparian and the channel, yeah.
Well, there are screens attached to those PCA areas that we may not want to impose upon a park.
I just want to know, I want to explore it. I mean, I just feel like you're letting things go by.
But it's been raised a few times, so we should probably just put it to bed.
Any other comments or questions?
I do, please. One of the comments in the manager's report is no off-paved surface parking in Holbrook Palmer Park, and that there are planners that you're directing staff to move to try to block that. And the biggest problem being, I guess, when, during Little League games, or where people want to park at that end of the park, rather than in the other parking area. We have a staff person in the park. Is that person authorized to enforce parking regulations by giving citations?
They're not authorized to cite, but they can call the PD to bring them out there to do so.
Okay, so I think that we, I think it would be wise to give those cars that are parked in the wrong place a warning. And if, if there's quite a number of them that are doing this, we should give them a couple of weeks' warning, and then we should start enforcing them.
Agreed. Well, we need to get sign up.
The sign is going to be the one.
Well, can the onsite person give a little warning ticket on, not a ticket, but a...
Certainly walk by and say, is it your car you need?
Or put a little warning piece of paper on it? Can you, something?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, George indicated he was going to put a sign up that said that... Maybe the sign should be there for a week or two, like we're doing with the placards. And then you start enforcing it two weeks later. Prices were coming to the end of the season, but there were some issues where there were, you know, Stanford Hospital had something there, and then there was Jane over Little League. You saw some of it, it got worse the following week.
The Little League's just one, one band.
Yes.
But any, any large event, we should... See, when does the sign go up in the park?
I believe we picked them up today, so we should have them up this week, so.
Excellent.
Great period, how long?
We can give a week or two, no problem.
As far as giving tickets, I can't answer to that.
Start June.
Okay. Perfect. Go. Any comments? Anyone?
I'm okay, thank you.
All right, seeing no more comments from the city manager, let's go ahead and move on to item number seven, community organization roundtable. We have none. Move on to item number, the consent agenda, the consent calendar, items number eight through 14. Any member of the public that would like to pull an item eight through 14 on the consent calendar? Seeing none.
Yes.
Please.
Number 13.
Perfect, 13 will be pulled. Any more from the public, please? Seeing none, go ahead and close it from the public. Any council member would like to pull a consent item number eight through 13, 14?
I would like to make a comment on 10, and also on 13 as well.
Perfect. Do you want to wait for your comment on 13?
I can make the comment quickly. I thought that the, I would like to congratulate Robert on that. I thought it was very well done. I thought that the report was, was clear, and, and as well as the, you know, the budget report. But I thought he did a good job, and look forward to getting that on a regular basis. It's a, it's good and eye-opening, thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Bill, do you want to make any comment on item number 13?
Well, my comment on 13 was that I did read the letter, and I did write to Rick when he sent it out, and I circulated it amongst a number of neighbors to make sure that they saw it, because we want to get people sending it in as well. The comment is, is that, of course, it's our letter, and we can say several things. And I know that the FAA and others are considering perhaps raising the glide path, you know, by 0.77 degrees. But there was always the discussion about expanding the vector. I know there's been an informal agreement that there'd be at least this 10% vector, which would actually, when you calculate the cord, actually would take the flight path from the middle of Lindenwood down to just over by Menlo School. And while that's helpful to the people who's getting flown over, we originally started the discussion, saying we think that it would be appropriate to have this over 101, or closer, you know, to the bay. And, and of course, the FAA can always reject it, they could probably reject this too if they want, but I think that we should at least ask, because this, the flights are not just surf air, it's getting worse, there are a lot more, including Citation Jet, commercial flights now flying in and out of there. And so the city of San Carlos is really growing that airport, and it is becoming a big irritant. So I'd like to at least submit to the council that we at least add a paragraph suggesting some sort of expansion. It's not just a surf air issue.
I just, I think Elizabeth has some clarity for you.
I think, Vice Mayor, haven't they broadened their approach wedge, and they're using it going over 101 when they can? And that residents have seen a difference in that, but then it goes back to kind of the straight in.
Mr. Mayor, we're almost up to three, and I'm going to suggest that you pull this item, because somebody, but, but hold the comments till the end, because we're all making comments, and it's lost, it's...
Perfect, it's lost, it's just common. So we'll bring it back when it comes.
So then let's go as a...
Item 13's pulled. Anybody else want to pull any other? Mr. Green? No. Seeing none more. So can I have a motion to approve by the exception of...
Eight through 14, less 13.
Eight through 14, with the exception of 13. Can I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? No, thank you. So let's go ahead and move on to the public hearing part, item number 15, which is consider an ordinance amending the Atherton Municipal Code, chapters 17.40 and 17.60 relating to the accessory building and athletic facilities. Can I have Lisa?
Good evening. The item requires a recommendation from the planning commission to amend sections of the Atherton Municipal Code relating to accessory buildings as well as athletic facilities. The first amendment relates to windows on accessory buildings. The code currently states that accessory buildings may contain a window or a skylight, but it does have a provision that no window opening that faces a side or rear parking line shall be located over nine feet above ground level. Staff has interpreted this code section to also prohibit skylights, although it's not specifically stated. And this common, this has been a common question that's been raised by applicants, where they want to put a skylight facing the side of your property line. So staff brought this item forward to the planning commission for some clarification. Do you want to continue to restrict windows and skylights facing side of your property line over nine feet? Question one. Two, if so, we would like to add that word, skylight, just in there for clarity for applicants. And the planning commission does recommend that we continue to have that restriction for the accessory buildings, and that we add the word skylight to be very clear in that, in that section of the code. The next amendment relates to accessory buildings and guest house. We had a concern by a resident that the code doesn't specifically define a guest house under accessory buildings, and there was some confusion about a second dwelling unit, and trying to distinguish better between a guest house and a second dwelling unit. So staff felt that was an appropriate code cleanup to have, to better clarify when it's an accessory building or a guest house, and when it's a secondary dwelling unit. So we'd like to add a definition for guest house to the accessory building definition, as well as add a definition of second dwelling unit to the definition section of the code. And the planning commission does recommend that forward to the council as well. And then finally, the planning commission spent several meetings discussing athletic facilities. We had a specific concern from a neighbor about a dirt bike track that was constructed adjacent to their property. We were able to resolve a lot of the concerns at staff level, but it did come forward to the planning commission as an item for discussion. While they were discussing how they may want to regulate something like a dirt bike track, they also thought it was appropriate to add some provisions for batting cages. We're getting a lot of construction of batting cages. Recently, they've been in locations where they're not allowed, so outside the accessory building setbacks, so, you know, we worked with code enforcement to have them moved. But we're getting some concerns from neighbors that, you know, pinging against the cage of the mesh, you know, is concerning. So we've added some section about the design and construction of the batting cage, and it's sound baffling. And then we've also added some additional definitions in with athletic facilities. To be clear, the Bachi Ball Court is an athletic facility that doesn't include setbacks. Same with putting rings, because right now it's not specifically defined, so just want to be very clear. And all those items have been recommended to you by the planning commission. I'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions.
Beautiful, thank you, Lisa. Any questions from council?
Yeah, I've got, I guess, two questions. One was on the batting cages you grew up, and there was a reference in there to baffling, but I didn't see that it was a requirement. And, you know, on the heels of some of the discussions that are over with, with Menlo School, with the carton field, where there's a concern about, you know, the pinging of the metal bats, most people are, are using metal bats these days, or using batting cages also to hit golf balls. And so it does make some noise, and, and it's regular noise for an extended period of time. It's not like having a baseball game, because you've got a pitching machine, this pitching, pitching, pitching. So is the baffling, did I read it right? Is the baffling an option, and this is how you're going to do it, or is it a requirement?
It's worded as netting and sound baffling material shall be used.
Okay, so it's a requirement, okay. Okay, good, thank you very much for that. Also, on the, and I brought this up for the rest of the council with George when I met, on the nine-foot requirement, I agree, you know, with the, with the comments with regards to the skylights. Since we have a requirement that any fences, neighbors have fences, they're six feet, and we're pretty, unless they're on a, you know, busy street, or if they're on, you know, a boundary of the town. So with a six-foot requirement, I understand also that, you know, windows might be six and a half to seven feet off the ground. Wouldn't it be appropriate to say, bring the window number down from nine feet to a lower number, so that really it doesn't, it's not intrusive going over a six-foot fence? Nine feet, it's three feet above the nine-foot, a six-foot fence, and it just would have seemed that it would be lower, and didn't look to, that, that the planning commission really looked into that type of discussion, they just, you know, really were focused on the skylights, so.
That's correct. They didn't, they didn't discuss that specific, should it be lowered or modified? The question was, should it remain a restriction, or, and if so, should we add that provision? That nine-foot limitation has been in place for quite some time. I need to look up exactly how long, but I know more than 20 years. And I don't believe we've received any specific complaints about a lot of light intrusion. We also have the restriction on lighting, and we do get more complaints on that, when people have those large motion sensing lights, you know? And so there, we do have a restriction that lighting shall be shielded or downlit, the source of light, so it's not visible. And I think that helps a lot, most of the complaints we get on guest houses.
But there's been no complaints on nine-foot windows and six-foot fences. Okay, all right, fine, thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
I have a question, please. So I, I don't understand the issue with the skylight. So you've got an accessory building that is next to a side yard setback or a rear yard setback, and you can't have a window over nine feet, I understand that.
Right.
And the skylight's on the roof.
Correct.
What is the issue with the skylight? Because...
It would be the same issue as the window over nine feet, that it would have that light that would shine from the base of the property.
Shine out at night.
Correct. If the light were on in the, you know, interior lit.
And people consider that annoying.
Well, it's only three feet away.
Apparently it is. I guess. Okay.
It's how shade the skylight is, or...
Yeah. And how, what's the rate of this in the public?
If there's no landscape screening along the fence, which is supposed to be...
There typically is. Lots of screen.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none. Any public comments on this item? Seeing none, bring it back to council.
Did you officially open the public hearing before it opened?
Yes. So we're going to go ahead and go to public comments again. Any public comments on this item? Seeing none, I will close that, bring it back to council. Any follow-up comments from council? Seeing none. Do I have a motion?
I move that we adopt the changes to the ordinance, I think it's written down, how we're supposed to say this, but adopt the changes to the ordinance as specified in the staff report.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion?
We're sending a flag.
Your, your recommendation would be introduce the attached ordinance amending the code 1740 and 1760 relating to athletic buildings and athletic facilities.
I'm sorry, I couldn't get to the right page in time.
Here it is.
It's that technology. I had a second, I have a motion, please?
Second.
And all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Let's go ahead and move on to item number 16. Let's go ahead and move on to item number 16, which is to consider an introduction of the density bonus ordinance amended to the Atherton Municipal Code. Neil Martin, oh, you're not Neil? Three, it's all yours.
Thank you. The item before you is a recommendation from the Planning Commission to add the density bonus provision to the Atherton Municipal Code in compliance with state law. California state law requires local jurisdictions provide density bonuses and/or other concessions for the production of affordable housing units if requested by an applicant. If the Town of Atherton does not adopt the recommended ordinance, the entire state law would apply by default. Density bonus requests are typically applied to multifamily housing developments. And it's pretty hard to revision a affordable housing request in Atherton given the high cost of plan. Regardless, we are required to do such. The staff report outlines several development examples on how the ordinance could be applied to a project in Atherton. And I'll just talk through that first example with you. It involves a subdivision of a 10-acre parcel with a request for 10% of the units to be designated for low-income households. Under the ordinance as proposed, the developer would be entitled to a density bonus of 20%. Atherton currently subdivision ordinance is one acre minimum, so one unit per acre. And with a 20% density bonus, the developer could subdivide and create 12 lots. However, the Planning Commission has added a provision that the lot size be no less than 80% of the minimum lot size for the district in which it is located. So with this provision, in no case can the newly created lots be less than 34,848 square feet. This would allow the developer to provide one affordable lot, one affordable unit on a lot, and develop 11 new market-rate home sites. The affordable unit would be deemed restriction for no less than a period of 30 years. I really thought that was a good provision with the Planning Commission added of that 80% because we do have, you know, a few lots in town that are smaller in size. And I think that helps protect the character of the town by having that provision. When we originally discussed it, it wasn't in place and I thought that was a very good suggestion that they made. If the ordinance is adopted as attached to the staff report, it would apply to density bonus requests in Atherton. And as indicated, the state law provisions would then modify only the ordinance that you would be adopting. The town would not be required to provide any financial incentives to housing developers under this ordinance. Staff has requested two changes to the ordinance for your consideration. One, I noted a typo on page two, item 17.58.0486. It has an old reference of 75%, that was up to 80%. So item six, lot sizes shall not be less than 80% of the minimum lot size for the district. And then number two, we're recommending that the city council be the deciding body and the Planning Commission be the recommending body. I know the Planning Commission had a lot of concern about this item when they discussed it. And I think they would feel much more comfortable, you know, having the Planning Commission as the deciding, recommending by a city council deciding body. And that also provides more opportunity for public input into the process. So with that, I believe through the city attorney, you can introduce the ordinance tonight with those two minor changes. And then we would incorporate those if you were ready to adopt them at the next meeting. Just wanted to let you know that a similar ordinance has been in place for some time in the Town of Hillsborough, and they've received no requests for density bonuses under that. Be happy to try to answer any of your questions.
Perfect. Council on the floor.
How does this work with our general plan? And why would the state be able to override what our general plan says? The state mandate?
We do have that one.
Because of the big bad person.
Because, because we're a general law city and when the state adopts provisions that apply to all general law cities, they circumvent whatever we might think is a good idea for local control. They have applied this statewide and because they're the state, they can do it.
With these subdivided lots or the, would they be rental units? And or like, could the developer keep all, say, in your example one, keep all 11 lots and just rent them out as, because I didn't think that we...
Well, the design of the subdivision would be similar to the design of any other subdivision in Atherton with a single-family home. We're not proposing that you would have 11 attached units and a lot of open space around it, you know, be very similar to the development pattern you have now. They could certainly choose to rent out a house just like you could choose to rent out your house.
But they would have to do it for 30 years, is that what I...
It would need to be affordable for 30 years. They need to certify that to us in writing.
The one unit would need to be for at least 30 years. You could go longer if you so chose.
Right, okay. Who determines what's affordable?
State law.
The state. And then we do have the table, it's based on, it comes down from the Housing and Urban Development Department. And then it comes down to San Mateo County. And we're a higher-cost area, so we have a little bit higher affordability ranges than the other counties. So it's a county level.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none. Any public, did you have a comment? Any public comments on this item? Seeing no public comments, we'll close the public comments back to council. Any final comments by council?
I just want to put, so this has been reviewed by the Planning Commission and discussed over the last few months by the Planning Commission. And this is their recommendation, they're passing this on up to us.
That's right.
And all planning commissioners participated in it?
Yes.
Any other comments? Council on the floor?
No, I think I'm okay.
Thank you. You're welcome. Vice Mayor? So do I see a motion?
I was looking to see if there was some wording that was provided. I think, I think the motion is to approve an ordinance to the City Council in Atherton and in Chapter 17.58 of the Atherton Municipal Code.
And wait, wait for the reading and introduce the ordinance.
And wait for the reading and introduce the ordinance.
Second.
Any further, any further comment? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Perfect, we'll move on. So let's go ahead and move on to the regular agenda, item number 17. Atherton Dames Carrot House Project, follow-up to the April 16, 2014 presentation by the City, to the City Council. City Manager, George Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to turn this one over to Mike, who's done the follow-up as requested by the council at the last meeting. And then there's also a uses section, which I added to the staff report as well. Mike?
Mayor, recent members of the city council, this item is primarily for information. However, if desired, the city council may authorize the mayor to provide a letter of support for this project. At the April 16, City Council...